Good evening. Today is Thursday, January the 16th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education. We're going to start off with a silent prayer. Dr. Schwartz, do you have any remembrances tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools' education community who fasted away. Donna Sanford, former social worker for the Department of Education, passed away on December 20th, 2024. Chloe Rimzubag, freshman at Willby High School, passed away on January 12th, 2025. Please keep them in your remembrances.
Can Jaden and Vidia from Kennedy High School do our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Ireland. Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner Orsak.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Present.
President Hernandez.
Here. Commissioner Vanstone, may I have a motion for communications?
My motion, have we received a place on the file of communications as listed?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Serrano Adorno, may I have a motion for public addresses to the board?
I motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
All speakers are encouraged to submit prepared written statements to the commissioners. Comments shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review and response. Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We aren't public speaking. Our first speaker is Wendy Tyson Woods, NAACP.
Good evening. Wendy Tyson Wood, Greater Waterbury NAACP Branch President. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for this space and this opportunity to share. I think it's very important that we speak up and share with you our thoughts, hopes, and hopefully some words of wisdom that will help this community. Our children and their parents are looking for us to do whatever we can, whenever we can and however we can to make this very important time in their lives meaningful. Two things real quick. I want to thank the four commissioners and the two administrators that came out for the public hearing for the superintendent search. Commissioner Ireland, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Rocco, I believe, was there, and there was one other individual who was at there, Commissioner Vanstone. And I want to thank the administrators, Jade Gope and the other superintendents that showed up. We, as the Greater Waterbury NAACP, are disappointed with the search process. We felt that the two meetings that was held prior for community input was very ill timed and not very transparent. We had one, I attended both of those meetings, and we had one at the City Hall where parents really spoke up and really shared, you know, their concerns and their frustrations, which is the purpose of that. We didn't feel as though they were very much listened to. The second meeting we had, which was at West Side, was it West Side, which was very, very disappointing because it was no way for any parent who lived in that area to actually attend. It was dark. It was, I think you had maybe five people in the audience. I'm looking at the commissioners here tonight. I expected more from the commissioners who weren't there. We don't have many opportunities to speak, and we really expect you guys to show up. You know, if we're going to come out at a very inconvenient time during dinnertime, we expect you to do the same. Finally, I really want to say that the transparency with the superintendent search is just not there. I think the city of Waterbury can do a better job. This is a very important role. This is the guidance that we will need that will bring these students to where they have to go. We appreciate the efforts that are being done, but we want more, and we have to continue to ask for more. Like I said, we're always invited. We're always looking forward for an invitation to speak, but when you feel like you're not being heard, there is no other choice but to come to forums like this and put it on the record that we expect more. It's not that they don't want to be here, they just don't feel heard. So please, if you can do more, a Saturday meeting, some timeframe where the parents and the children can come to these meetings would be very much. Our doors are always open. We have our meeting every third Saturday of the month at Silence Bronson Library, 11 this Saturday, and we also will start doing something on Saturdays afternoon. So we ask you to come and listen and talk to us because this is a very, very, very important role. Thank you for your time.
There are no other speakers?
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
I need a second.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
I move to remove item number 12.3 from the agenda.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to add item number 14A, an executive session to the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Interim superintendent's announcements. Dr. Schwartz?
Thank you, President Hernandez. Good evening. Good evening, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Ed Commissioners, and our student representatives. I have a brief updates tonight as we had a meeting last week, and so just wanted to give some shout outs to well deserved recognition. Mattetuck Museum presented the Waterbury Clock Legacy Award to one of our own, Melissa Martin. She is a counselor at Washington Elementary School and a recent hire, so congratulations to her and her husband. Cicero Booker Jr., a classroom aide at Adult Ed, will be inducted into the Connecticut Veterans Hall of Fame for his continued commitment and impact to his community after service in the Marines. And Sherrell Herbert, our wonderful sixth grade house principal at North End Middle School, was recognized as Woman of the Week by a local radio station for her dedication to her students and school community. According to students and staff, Ms. Herbert ensures her students and teachers feel valued and appreciated and always attends school events to cheer on those students. She is an inspiration to her community, and congratulations to all of those in the Waterbury Public Schools for their accomplishments. We also want to give a shout out to our all state, Davide Rivera Jr. from Waterbury Career Academy. He made the 2024 Connecticut High School Coaches Association All State Football SS Team and the 2024 Walter Camp Second Team. Davide signed to play at Central Connecticut State University next year. We are so proud of you. And I'm sure everybody's hungry, so the best thing about that is to put up some food on the screen here. But I want to give a shout out to the commissioners on the School Health and Wellness Advisory Committee and those that are on cabinet and other members, actually Sherrell, that we just honored as part of this committee, as well as other administrators and the Health Department. So we resurrected that committee, and through that committee, we're doing great work. But I wanted to point this up, put this up because I know Nick Albini is a big part of this, and Linda Francese in our district is working to make sure we have healthier and fruitful choices for students during lunchtimes. And so we piloted a salad bar for the first time in Waterbury Public Schools at Gil Martin, and starting Tuesday, we are going to be opening it up and go big time at Kennedy, and Try North End is actually going to start on Thursday. And so I know other commissioners are part of, I know President Hernandez and Commissioner, Secretary Serrano Adorno and Commissioner O'Brien are part of that School Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, and this is just one area that we're looking into to better our district. And so this is based on student survey, student choice. We have some great data so far associated with this salad bar program where we see a lot of students actually participating at a high rate. And so, for example, on December 17th, we had over 90 students in the upper grades at Gil Martin take a salad that day. And, you know, Gil Martin's not the biggest school, and so that's a pretty high rate of students taking salads. And so we're glad to see students are taking advantage of this program. We're happy to offer these choices and expand them. And that concludes my report.
Madam President, could I ask a question?
Vice President Brown.
Dr. Schwartz, I was wondering if you could just mention a little bit about the press conference Monday at the Capitol?
Sure. I was asked to attend a press conference on Monday at the Capitol with the five largest cities in Connecticut, the mayors for those larger cities, which includes Stanford, New Haven, Bridgeport, Hartford, Waterbury, and, did I say New Haven?
Yeah, now you do.
New Haven, now I did. In New Haven, and they invited the five superintendents of those, or interim or acting superintendents in those cities, to go with them to the press conference to the state Capitol to discuss the need for more funding for the largest cities. And at that, at that press conference, luckily, I was heavily involved in some of the data points that we were able to talk about at that, at that meeting. And so just off the top of my head, I think it's important for all of us to know that those five cities account for 48% of all homeless students in the entire state of Connecticut. So in just five cities, we have 48% of the homeless students. Eighty-three percent of our students in our five cities are students of high need. So we service 83% of our students of high need. And I think that it was, we have, I believe, close to four in every 10 multilingual learner in the state is in our city, five cities. And so we look at those not as barriers but as strengths of our city, the diversity of our city, that we have challenges that we embrace, no doubt, but that we also talked about that those challenges also come with the concept of that those challenges require funding to be able to meet those challenges. We're not asking, we were not asking for anything frivolous or for money that would go ill spent, but the, and I think the New Haven Mayor, Mayor Eleker said it, he had a pretty interesting comment. He said that if New Haven spent just as much per student as New Canaan, they would be asking for over $70 million a year more. And in his words, it was, "And our students in New Haven obviously need more," and he grew up in New Canaan, so he could say this, "than would my peers need in New Canaan." And he was just trying to make the point that if you want to close the gaps and close, we got to close the equity and the opportunity for our students. And so it was just a press conference to highlight how important our cities are for our state and to highlight the funding that's associated with good work. And just to close that off, I did use the example of our turnaround schools because our turnaround schools have been successful. We've had two of our three schools come out of turnaround, and our final school has made one year's growth and needs one more year to get off of turnaround. And with that small additional pot of funding that we were able to receive from the state through that grant, you could see the impact on children. And so, you know, as the money drives up from Esser, as the money drives up, this is the, next year's the last year for the increase in alliance, you know, those are, we've already seen the tough decisions that had to be made with Esser going away from our district. A lot of programs that we really liked for students, whether it was 24/7 counseling opportunities, Student Success Agency, we used to have RC Tutors and many other pieces that we had in the district that there was no more funding for, really brings to light the need for more funding. And I just, and I also talked about summer as well, and how we were able to provide a lot of summer opportunity for students, whether it be for credit recovery and/or community-based organizations that were able to support our students so our students could attend a enriching summer program for free. Will no longer be an option if we don't get the funding. And so, thank you for bringing that up. And that was a press conference. Hopefully, it goes somewhere.
Thank you. I think it's important that we continue to advocate for public education.
Thank you, Dr. Schwartz. President's comments. Just want to say, welcome aboard to our new commissioner, Commissioner Lopez. Good luck. Happy New Year to our staff and our students. And that's just about all I have to say right now. So, welcome aboard. We have student representatives Jaden and Vida for Kennedy High School.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, and Dr. Schwartz. My name is Vidia Sagendorf, and I am the 12th grade representative and senior vice president for Kennedy High School. Serving as the Kennedy representative has been an honor for the past two years, and Jaden and I are here tonight to share all the positive impact and growth Kennedy has experienced recently. Many of our seniors are finishing their post-secondary applications, and many have received admissions letters already. We wish them all luck in their journeys. Today also concluded the end of our midterms and marks the end, marks the beginning of the third marking period. Many of the students have enjoyed our recent events like our Halloween and holiday movie night, our senior sunrise, homecoming, our senior trip to New York City before the holidays in December. We are actively planning the spring events like senior night, prom, and filming the senior video throughout the year. We also have an update on our athletics team and our marching band. Our varsity football team qualified for the class double L playoffs for the first time in school history, and our first ever girl soccer team just finished a successful season. Last November, our Kennedy Eagle marching band went to nationals for the first time ever in school history, and right now they're getting ready for the Memorial Day Parade, while our jazz band is getting ready to go to the national jazz competition in Philadelphia also for the first time ever in school history. We also have two seniors who made it into the Southern Regional Music Festival this weekend, held by the Connecticut Music Educators Association. We have Brian Torres in band and Vidia Sagendorf in choir. I don't know how to say that. We also have some examples of Kennedy's community outreach. Our Yes Club hosted our annual trunk or treat, which connected local kids with students and staff on the widely celebrated holiday. Our trick-or-treaters receive candy from many of our student clubs. Our Distributive Education Clubs of America, otherwise known as DECA Club, donated toys for toys for tots, and our Italian Albanian Club has donated pasta to seniors in the area. Before I pass the mic to Jaden, we'd like to take a moment to recognize that all of our accomplishments thus far would not be possible without your continued support, and we thank you for that.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, and Dr. Schwartz. My name is Jaden Acevedo, and I am the new 11th grade representative at Kennedy High School. I am part of the SOAR program as well as the Talented and Gifted Program. I also love to take part in various extracurricular activities such as DECA, marching band, and boys volleyball. And I'm honored and excited to be the Kennedy representative on the Board of Education for the next two years. We held a winter door decorating contest, which livened up the holidays tremendously, and also showed the creativity of our students. Our beautification club, which was in charge of the winter door decorating contest, also does things around the building such as decorate our bulletin boards and just all around the building, making it a more welcoming environment, such as for winter when they put up snowflakes around the main entrance. Roof replacement work has been completed, and we are nearing completion of our HVAC work. Going on to some of our plans, our Black History Month showcase is coming up next month. Now that our play Clue onstage has concluded, we are now in rehearsal process for our winter musical, The Addams Family, which has three showings taking place February 28th and March 1st. Over 60 of our seniors will be attending our fast food completion breakfast next week. Our 5:30 and 4:80 S and T prep clubs start this Tuesday, January 21st, and DECA is going to the SEDC State Competition held at Aquaturf on March 3rd. Now, we'd like to mention an opportunity that could greatly benefit our fellow students: school year internships. Many students who wish to gain work experience have a difficult time getting hired because of their age and their limited hours. After seeing what it hit the summer internships were these past two years, we'd like to explore the idea of after-school or evening internships to help struggling students earn work experience with the conflict of school. We thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for our student representatives? Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Item 9.1, request Item 9.1, request approval to file a non-priority grant application for the Commissioner of Administrative Services for the proposed partial roof replacement of the Bergen Education 9.2, request approval of the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed partial roof replacement for the Bergen Education Complex project. 9.3, request approval of the establishment of a building committee for the proposed partial roof placement of the Bergen Education Complex project. 9.4, request approval of a professional service agreement with Math Concepts Inc. for math teacher coaching. 9.5, request approval of Amendment 1 to the Professional Service Agreement, RFP number 7120, with Linguistica International to provide phone-in or video-on-demand translation services. 9.6, request approval of a professional service agreement, RFP number 8241, with SLR International Corporation for On-Call Environmental Services and AHERA inspections. 9.7, request approval of Amendment 1 to the Professional Service Agreement with the Mattituck Historical Society for Museum Tours and Education. 9.8, request approval of the Professional Service Agreement with Airea Cooperative Educational Services, ACES, to provide fiduciary agents and administration support for respect to the LEAP program. 9.9, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 9.10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waivers. Commissioner O'Brien, I have a motion.
I motion to approve Consent Calendar items 9.1 through 9.10 as read.
Second.
Discussion?
I have one question.
Vice President Brown.
I'm looking at 9.8 and asking for ACES to be the fiduciary for the LEAP program. Could somebody explain that?
I can start it off, and if, Nick, if you need to jump in, but ACES has always been the fiduciary. The grant passes through ACES.
I didn't realize that. Okay, thank you, okay.
Are there any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Committee of the Whole, Vice President Brown.
Okay, where are we? 11.1, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the proposed partial roof replacement for the Bergen Education Complex project.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Orso.
Item 12.1, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with Automatic Logic Contracting Services Incorporated for preventative maintenance services to the building management system.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Orso.
Item 12.2, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Board of Education approve a construction contract with NEWS LLC to provide demolition of a portable addition at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Orso.
Item 12.4, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Board of Education approve, apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Chef's Two Schools Grant.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item number 13, interim superintendent's notifications to the board. Interim Superintendent Schwartz.
In addition, I just want to remind everyone that Monday is a day of remembrance for Robin Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January 20th, so we will be observing that, and we won't have school, and be on the lookout for the Board of Education. We have sent out our information to all of our schools to gather all the wonderful events to celebrate February as Black History Month, and so our schools will be compiling that again, and we'll be getting that to you shortly so that you could take part in any of the events that you wish.
Commissioner Van Stone, I have a motion.
I motion to, interim superintendent's notification to the board, motion to receive and please unfile, notification to the board, items 13.1 through 13.6 as read.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Committee chair reports, do I have any? Secretary Serrano O'Donoh.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to touch base on it when Dr. Schwartz was talking about our school health and wellness. I do want to thank the team and all the commissioners that is also in that committee. The survey results was very interesting, they did survey grades, third grade to 12th grade. Are they going to do more of these surveys? Okay, good. It's actually really interesting, so for the students from Kennedy, if you guys ever get a link, you know, your input is very important, but some of the questions was, you know, what were your favorite breakfast items out of the following chicken items? Which is your favorite? Do you eat breakfast, which is important? Beef items, pasta meals, I mean, they really broke it down to their favorite condiments, you know, something maybe so simple you would think. One of the questions was, do you think that our meals look tasty? Do you feel more energy and able to pay attention after you eat? And the majority said yes, so that's a good thing. Do you feel like you have enough food choices offered to you so that you feel full after eating? The majority said no, but again, you know, only 6,000 students participated, so I think the more students that actually participate, we may get a clearer picture, but I do just want to give kudos to everyone for even, you know, really trying to dig deep into what these, you know, everybody talks about the school lunch, and if we can't eat it or we don't want to eat it, we can't expect them to, so I, you know, I kind of give props, and I'm happy that, you know, that they are trying the salad bar, I think that's very important. So thank you, Dr. Schwartz, and for the team, I applaud you guys, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Serrano O'Donoh, would you take us into executive session?
Yes, ma'am. I move to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
All right, just Dr. Schwartz, and we are now in executive session.